Call this meeting to order. We're a few minutes late. Councilmember Holman is on his way. Councilmember Carter will join us later. Have we heard from Councilmember Scanlon?
No, he may be on the other side of the train tracks too.
Ah, yes. Yep, okay. All right. Well, tonight on the agenda, we have discussion regarding the OG&E franchise and related agreements and programs. And with us, take it away, sir.
Thank you. Mayor Clark, councilmembers, City Manager Pyle, City Attorney Walker, and for others in the room, my name's Tom McCurdy, Norman Community Fair Manager for OG&E. I'm pleased to be here this evening representing a nationally recognized electric utility company that has been an industry leader in customer service, storm restoration, which is fitting for today, and 2018 had the lowest combined electric rates in the United States. With me this evening will be Zach Gladhill, Director of Grid Integration Innovation. Zach will follow me and give a presentation on solar generation. Alba Weaver, she will be here in a minute. She's the Manager of Economic Development. She will be here. She represents OG&E, and OG&E is one of the leading utilities in economic development efforts, and Alba's group has had many successes in bringing businesses to OG&E's communities and a key ally to the Oklahoma State Chamber, Oklahoma Department of Commerce, and Norman Chamber of Commerce. Many utilities do not value economic development, and I am proud that OG&E invests in efforts to help our communities grow. We're here to reengage with you on the renewal of a franchise agreement between the city and OG&E. This partnership started in 1917, and OG&E has been proud to be a vital supporter of the growth of this great community. Our corporate stewardships begin with our belief that we're only as strong as the 280 communities that we serve and approximately 850,000 customers. In the city limits of Norman alone, OG&E proudly serves 49,024 electric accounts. This includes 44,099 residential, 4,332 commercial accounts, 74 industrial accounts, 34 oilfield accounts, and 485 public authority accounts. We strive daily to balance delivering reliable and affordable electricity to help communities and Oklahoma economy. Rest assured, the company evaluates the needs and wants the stakeholders through the process of retiring and replacing generation while honoring our commitment to minimize our environmental footprint. We have multiple stakeholders with multiple demands. Some want the lowest cost option, some want to pay more for additional products and services, and some have a great concern for the environment. OG&E efforts to fulfill this commitment to emission reduction has resulted in sulfur dioxide emissions being lowered by 90%, nitrogen oxide emissions being lowered by 75%, and carbon dioxide, CO2, emissions being lowered by approximately 40% from the 2005 levels. And more reductions are coming by 2030. This performance is among the best in the industry. Many of the utilities are trying to get to these levels by 2025 or 2030, but we are already there. Between 2030 and 2050, OG&E expects to retire 95% of its current fossil fuel generation fleet and meet our future capacity needs by replacing this retiring generation with newer technology, which includes renewables and high-efficiency natural gas. So it's my belief that OG&E and Norman are aligned in our paths. For the new councilmembers, I want to give a brief history of the negotiations on the franchise agreement as I understand it. In 2017, OG&E presented to the city a proposed franchise agreement, which was expired in December of 2018. To the credit of this council, you all took the opportunity to express concerns and sought solutions from OG&E. Since that time, we have worked tirelessly to address these concerns. Examples of partnering with the city to develop vegetation management strategy and ordinance that all companies and entities operating the city's roadways will follow, including chemical use, tree trimming, and tree removal. OG&E continues education in tree placement programs, along with sponsoring free tree giveaways. Another concern of this council we have addressed is additional investment in Norman downtown area. The company has invested approximately $7 million to revitalize downtown distribution service. Since this is Councilman Hickman's last meeting this evening, I would just like to recognize his hard work on behalf of the city and the downtown area. He's not here. It's my hope that you agree and believe that we have demonstrated we're willing partners. I would like to present two documents to you this evening. The first one is a memorandum of understanding and then a revised franchise agreement. The proposed MOU is a mechanism to change the narrative from our previous franchise effort, demonstrating the company's willingness to partner with Norman to achieve the city's goals and address concerns heard from councilmembers and constituents. The MOU document before you highlights the following. OG&E's desire to help Norman achieve further and further its renewable energy initiatives; number two, create an ad hoc committee to sort through renewable energy solutions, cost savings, opportunities through energy efficiency, reliability improvements, and customer experiences; and work with the city to assist innovative electric technology solutions for customers. OG&E will create annually a reliability report to the city that will compare OG&E circuits within the city limits of Norman to overall OG&E system averages. We've done this before, and you'll recall that Norman was the first city to benefit from our smart grid installation now some 10 years ago. OG&E also agrees to work with staff to implement mutually acceptable performance standards to report LED streetlight outages and provide a city employee access to real-time data on the operating status of all OG&E maintained LED lights in Norman. Additional language about LED poles, ownership, and costs are also included in this MOU. I ask that the council and citizens show patience with the current LED rollout. The company has undertaken a five-year plan to replace all, which is approximately 300,000 lights, to LED, so it will take time and patience. Now I'd like to speak on the actual franchise document that was handed to you. It is simply a document that allows OG&E to use city streets, alleys, and roadways to provide electricity to the Norman customers. I'm here asking for your support to send this to the Norman voters for their consideration. The following are provisions for this franchise agreement. The franchise agreement grants the right of OG&E to produce, transmit, distribute, and sell electricity within the city limits and use streets, alleys for this system for a period of 25 years. The reason for the 25-year period, I know that's a concern to some of the council, the reason for the 25-year period is a standard among the communities that we serve. The company invests significant dollars to infrastructure and leveling these costs over a longer period of time to help keep customers late slow. And finally, when OG&E has to go to the market to borrow money for capital investments, this enables us to get cheaper rates, also a benefit to our customers. The second thing on the franchise agreement, OG&E will pay 3% of its gross revenues arising from the sale of electricity. This amount has varied from $2.7 million to $3.1 million to the city annually over the past five years. This amount varies in large part due to weather. The hotter years increase revenue to the city. OG&E will furnish Norman without charge each year, fiscal year, electric current to operate traffic signal lights, buildings occupied and operated by the city for municipal purposes, up to 1/2 of 1% of the kilowatt hours sold to the company, to the customers of Norman during the preceding year. This benefit was $557,000 for 2018. One change, unique, that I'd like to point out in the standard franchise that you have in front of you is language in Section 8 of the document. This language states, "In consideration for 25 years, the city and OG&E agreed to explore solar power option as an alternative to the provision of free service," and states that "any agreement reached would have to be subject to necessary regulatory approvals." The goal of this language provides additional flexibility to Norman and to OG&E as we work together on renewable goals. Next, OG&E, Norman retains the right to grant a franchise to any other party.
Tom, Councilmember Scott?
I actually have several questions, so I don't know if it should be, if I should wait.
Do you want us to wait till the end?
That's fine. Just wait till, I'll have like one more page, or then we're done.
Okay.
Are there copies of that document for us?
We will put it on the website tomorrow.
And once all the councilmembers have one, you should be able to.
Norman retains the right to grant franchises to any other party. Not exclusive. OG&E sales should construct, operate, and maintain its property so as not to impede traffic and defend Norman against all lawful claims for injury to any person or property caused by the use of streets. The rate or rates charged for electricity will be in accordance with other orders and regulations of the Oklahoma Corporation Commission. The franchise will not be effective until approved by the qualified voters of Norman, Oklahoma. The expense of the election shall be borne by OG&E. And finally, it is not in the current document, but I will follow up with City Attorney Walker. We're going to include a Favor Nations Clause in the document. So the city may receive any benefits similar to any other city that we serve should their franchise ever contain something the city may have an interest in pursuing. That's just added protection for the city.
So I might train.
So before I turn, ask questions, answer questions, and turn it over to Zach, I'd like to summarize this total proposal and tie this together. Up for your considerations, it is a MOU between the city and OG&E that will create an ad hoc committee to work together to assist Norman in the renewable energy goals, commitment to reporting on OG&E's Integrated Resource Plan outlining our growth projections and generation outlook, reliability reporting on OG&E's system, and LED conversion reporting. Hopefully, this will strengthen our relationship and partnership with Norman. Then, a separate franchise document that will go to the vote of the people, which is a standard agreement we have with all the communities we proudly serve, with one major exception. This agreement has added language to give Norman and OG&E flexibility to work together towards renewable energy goals. Any questions?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
Section 8 on the agreement, on the ordinance language, I see it explicitly says solar power as an option, however, it doesn't mention wind or other forms of renewable energies. So I'm curious if that was just an oversight or if that was an intentional designation.
That's just oversight. We could change that language, work with the city attorney, and change that to renewable energy.
Solar, wind, hydroelectric, whatever.
That's a good point.
Yes. And I appreciate you including that, knowing that was one of my major concerns, is that there has not been language to designate that. And then the other things I have are, where can we find, so you mentioned that since 2005, the company has lowered CO2 by 40%, and there are some other numbers that were thrown out. Where can we find that information? Is it publicly available?
Yes, it is. It's on, you go to OG&E's website and go to, as I believe it's company, and then it'll have a sub-tab of environment, and it'll have that information.
Okay. And then, so what about the capital investments? You said that when you guys go to Wall Street for capital investments, is that available to us? Do we know what is being invested in? Is it going to be coal, solar, wind, things like that?
The, what I can tell you on that, Alex, is anytime we do any investments, we have to go to the Corporation Commission. So that's, every time we have a rate case, we have to prove up those numbers, and they have to approve any investment we make.
What numbers, sorry?
On capital investment, payroll, vegetation management numbers, I mean, we have all these different numbers that they have to go through and audit.
And so, we wouldn't know necessarily what the investors are investing in?
The investors, what it is, is it's like you go to a bank and borrow money. We say, "We have, we're gonna, we're gonna have $100 million, $200 million investment." Or, "We need this money, so we're gonna, we need it for short-term or long-term." It doesn't matter what the terms are, but we go there with the idea of, "We're gonna need so much money to operate our business." And then, it's kind of like a bank, they say, "Okay, you have 280 communities that you serve with franchise agreements, so your interest rate is cheaper than if you don't." So there's not, we don't go specifically, say, with just one item, say, it's a power plant, or it's, or it's a building, a substation, you know, it's just various business operations.
I have a couple more questions. So you said that by 2030 that we would reduce these levels of CO2 and the other things even more. Is there a plan somewhere outlined that we have access to for that?
I can check and see.
Okay. And then I believe when we were discussing all of this before, there was talk of, like, a provision in here that says, that states that the city of Norman would revisit the agreement more frequently than 25 years, and I don't know if we grazed over that or if I'm just not seeing it.
It's not in there, Alex, and I'll tell you why. Two things. It was my, my thought process in drafting and help drafting the MOU was, if we had this committee that we're setting up, offering to set up with staff, with city people, you know, if you guys want to have a, you know, somebody specific you wanted to appoint to this committee, we're gonna be, we're gonna be working together quarterly, monthly, however we decide we want to meet annually, to go through these issues. So that's one reason why, because I kind of, I kind of touched on, the reason we want the 25 years is to keep it standard, to help us borrow money cheaper, and to help spread out costs instead of over 15-year periods, spread it out over 25-year period. That's, that's the main reason why we do that. But my, my thought process is, I think that this committee, if it's done right, it will have, it will be able to address all the issues as councils have, future councils have, over the next 25 years. And that's kind of what's, kind of what our thought is. And another thing I'd like to point out too, Alex, is this, this document does not prevent the city of Norman doing anything on their own. Okay? If you don't think that OG&E is doing the right thing, whatever, you guys can go invest in solar, do it, wind, whatever you want to do, you can do that on your own today. The only thing this franchise document does is gives us a right to use the streets and alleys and roads, and in lieu of that, we give you money and free electricity. So I'm hoping that this, I hope that you guys feel the same way about this committee, that if it's done right, that you guys can have a lot of influence in the direction that we go, and we can get some things accomplished.
Okay. Final question?
Yes.
Can you tell me, Tom, how much, how much are you supplied by coal, oil, and gas versus solar now, or solar, wind, and renewables?
Zach, you want to answer that question?
I don't know the numbers off the top of my head. I know we have about 800 megawatts of wind on a 6,000-megawatt system. I'm using some really broad numbers.
I'd like to know, like, the percentages, though, if you don't mind.
We'll put that on the website as well.
Compared to what you are providing in coal, and oil, and gas, natural gas.
Yeah, I think we're in the, I'll give you just ballpark.
Where is on the website?
I'm pretty comfortable stating that we're in the 40, 40 percentages on gas. We're like 30%, in the 30s, down in the coal, and we're up to 12%, I think, renewable. So I think that's kind of, that's kind of a ballpark, but I can, I'll get you the website location and.
Perfect. I love the website location where I can find all of this, and then my request would be to eliminate, maybe provide some language in here that steps away from coal entirely.
That, I think that's something that, that I think that we can look at with the committee. As I said, and one of the things, Alex, I think I might have glossed over a little bit, this IRP reporting that we have in this MOU, every three years, OG&E is required to put a presentation together for regulatory bodies that says, "Here's what our generation fleet looks like today. Here's the growth we see. Here's the growth we're anticipating, and here's when we're gonna need capacity. Here's where we're gonna do our retirement. Here's where we expect our plants to retire." So every three years, we will have that document.
So you all are planning on retiring some coal plants?
Yes, as, like I said in the one comment, by 20, between 2030 and 2050, OG&E expects to retire 95% of its current fossil fuel generation fleet.
What's current being the operative word?
Reducing 95% between those 20 years. What about within the next?
I don't think that's, I told, I said I would stop asking questions, so I'll let some of my peers ask questions now.
Councilmember Wilson?
Okay. I appreciate all of the nods towards our concerns here. 25 years is a very long time in a technological, I don't know, we're moving really fast with technology, so I have concerns that we have zero recourse for ourselves as a city built into this. Whatever we agree on is a 25-year agreement, so I want to make sure that we have everything in here. I would like some recourse. I don't know what that looks like, but if this ad hoc committee, or if the reports that you're gonna be doing, reliability, LED, if those come back with negative feedback, then what do we get as a city? How can we go to our constituents and say, "We got you the very best deal, there's gonna be a committee. Like, I really need some recourse." Sorry, I didn't mean to be funny about it, but that's just my nature. But, so, so that's what I would like built into this document before I can really get behind it. I need to know, every five years, I have an opportunity to, to hold OG&E responsible for providing the electric service that we want as a city towards going away from the coal like we want as a city. Norman is very progressive, and we, we want to do better by our environment, and we want our electric company to do better by our environment, and we want to be able to hold you accountable for that. So I need that built in here.
Thank you. Councilmember Bearman?
So, I, along those same lines with the 25-year period, I guess maybe, maybe if there's a different way to explain why you feel you need the 25 years, because when I think about it, I understand that you want to standardize that for financing, but it's not like every single franchise agreement comes up at the same time every 25 years. They're all spread out just over the course of doing business, so anytime you might need financing, there could be an untold number.
I can tell you today, okay, that Norman is the only community we don't have a franchise agreement with currently. It's not, it's not current.
But that's, that's not really what I'm getting at. I'm saying that I think.
My point is, is that, yeah, you're correct, that they stagger. We have, we have maybe six, seven, 10. We might have that many elections in one-year, two-year period. But that's, that's part, that's part of the, the process of keeping everything standard, and that's why we're doing this MOU. Is, that's kind of, to me, is a kind of a way to offset, you know, I understand your 25-year concerns, you know, it's a long time. At the same time, if we're investing multi-millions of dollars, you know, you'd want, you'd want more certainty as well.
We don't have any.
As we continue with the questions, I don't know if you got your question out, so please let them finish their questions before you jump in and start answering. Do you have anything else to add, Councilmember Bearman?
Yeah, I mean, that was, you answered part of my question, is that, you know, whether it's all 25 years or a mix of some that are longer and shorter, because of, that's the way the negotiations hammer out, you still have that mix, and you've still disseminated that risk over a longer, a long period of time, because you don't have them all coming up and going down at the same time. And so, for me, we need some way to hold you to something that is shorter than 25 years, because right now, if we pass this, at no point, we can ask 95. because right now, if we pass this, at no point, we can ask nicely and say, what are we doing to move beyond, to move beyond coal, or to expand our renewable energy, but that committee's not doing that. So what do we have, other than maybe a five-year opt-out? To be able to say, hey, we're not seeing the progress that we, that we would like to see, and so if we don't see, we don't have any way to hold you to something shorter than that. So I understand the risk, but we have risk too.
That's a valid point. But then, at the same time, I go back to, if you're not satisfied with OG&E's generation, Norman can build their own.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Well, we can't. However, if we did get that ability, then we would need, we would need to be able to have some recourse.
And my point is, is my whole goal on this, this whole project is, I want to spread all the cost that we incur over 850,000 customers and not 44,000. That's, that's my, that's my ultimate goal. And I want to work for the city. I hope this MOU document says that we're committed to that. You know, we've given you our goal, what we're committed to. And so I'm hoping that that will give you guys some sense of commitment on our part, that we're willing to help you guys get to your goal.
And, and I totally understand you protecting your interests here, and that's exactly what I feel like we have to do by pushing for something less than 25 years. So I do, I do understand that, but we are also looking at this from a slightly different lens. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Councilmember Scott, and then Councilmember Petron.
Really quick for our city attorney, do we have the ability to establish a municipal utility?
Yes, you have the ability to do that. The difficulty is getting enough money to fund it. So under state law, there's a moratorium on condemnation of other electric utilities. So we couldn't go to OG&E and say, we don't want you to do this anymore, we're going to buy you out, and we're going to operate persistent, if they didn't want to sell it to us.
And we don't have the money to buy them out anyway.
Right, and the other thing that makes that difficult is our utility rate provision in our charter, and then being able to adapt to a new business like that, we would have to go to the voters every time we needed to raise those rates. And so those are just some hurdles, I think, that we identified a couple of years ago when this first came up. But we do have that ability.
We do have the ability to establish our own utility. Okay. So we're looking at some of these things that you provided earlier, also the 40% from oil and gas, 30% from coal, 12% from renewables. I'm not a math person, but I don't think that adds up to 100. Can you share with me what the other 18%?
Like I said, it depends on what the 40, the 40 percentage, and the 30 percentage. I don't know the exact numbers, but I will promise you I'll get you those numbers.
Okay, can you also, and I'm going to just really push for this super hard, because many of us in here, Norman is progressive, and many of us know that climate changes, how it's affecting our city, how it's affecting our state, and coal is a mass contributor to the climate crisis, and so we really need to be stepping away and making that commitment to RF 100. And so can we, when we revisit this, can you please add a provision in there, either stepping away from coal, or, you know, I understand you want to shut down your 95% of the existing plants between 2030 and 2025, but what can we, what guarantees do we have not to have other coal plants, or other oil and gas plants? Does that make sense? And so can you do that for me?
Yeah.
Make that commitment?
Yeah, I'll try. I'll talk to our guys and see what we can draft up.
Thanks.
Councilmember Petron.
Okay, I have several questions, so I'll try to. What is the longest-term loan that OG&E typically goes under?
That's a good question. I don't know. Do you have any ideas, Zach?
No. Longer than 25.
So every loan that you take is typically over 25?
No. You just asked what the longest one was. But I don't know what the, that's not my field.
I think a lot of the houses, a lot of, I think.
Yeah, what is it? I don't know. What is this field?
Sorry.
I didn't get, I don't think I knew which, what you do with OG&E.
Innovation and integration, so I've kind of transformed the grid to renewables, DER, that kind of thing.
Oh, okay. So what is a typical loan, what's the life of the loan for OG&E typically, when you're going to go out onto the market, as you were talking about? Why is it 25 years?
I think part of it is, is when you borrow money, it depends on the timing, if you want to, if you want to try to borrow as much as you can, when you have investments, that you know you're having come down the pike, so you want to get the cheapest money you can for the longest period of time.
Yeah, I don't, I'm just wondering if this number is arbitrary, like, you just like, because it's a long time. I mean, 25 years is a really long time, in today's, you know, technology, so.
I've been with the company 28 years, and I know for a fact since the 20s, that all our terms have been 25 years.
Franchise agreements?
Yes.
Yeah, but not loans?
No, that's correct.
Okay, so I guess the next one would be, when we met, I talked to you about customers who generate their own electricity, and how OEC has been willing to roll meters back when they produce excess energy, and about how I had to go down to the Corporation Commission and testify to, in the OG&E trial, because of the tariffs, the solar tariffs. And at the time, I was concerned then, and now we're in a public meeting, and I want to hear, if we were to go into a franchise agreement with you, would you be willing to roll back neighbors' meters when someone is generating their own, I mean, not neighbors' meters, the person who's generating their own electricity, are you going to be willing to give them like a wholesale price, like OEC does, for that energy that OG&E is getting for free?
Yeah, sure. So.
Kind of turns into Zach here.
A couple of things on that. So OEC and OG&E work under different jurisdictions, so they have the ability to do that. Our net metering, or NIVO tariff, is a tariff that's approved by the Corporation Commission, and is essentially kind of a statewide tariff for us. So that tariff is in draft form right now. It went through a rule change this year, and it does become a little bit more favorable for the, the draft that's in right now is a little bit more favorable for the producer that has their own generation.
What, what does that look like?
So the specifics of it aren't final yet, but I think initially, there was a, there was no carryover month-to-month, so if you produced more than you used, then it would potentially go away at the end of the month. And I think in the new provision, or at least the draft, that carries into the next month. So it's a little bit more favorable. The rate, I think the rate, I don't want to speculate on what the rate's going to end up being, but it's, it's a rate that's relatively consistent with the market rate.
For solar? I mean, what's the market rate?
General, general energy rate.
Okay. Okay, so rebates that customers were getting for being overcharged. Didn't that happen recently? What was the deal with that?
Not that I know of.
I remember the headlines, not with solar, for regular, OG&E was having to give rebates, is that correct?
No, ma'am.
Hmm.
I think, I think what you might, might have read is, in our last rate case, we had zero impact to customers. There was no rate change. But the way it figured out with the tax cuts, and the new rate, it was, there was no negative effect. We had like a $65 million tax rate cut from Trump deal, and script from wrong, Zach. And then with that offset, with our investments, that we had our additional investment in our infrastructure, those offset each other, so there's no impact, and the rate stayed the same. So there was no rebate at any time.
Okay. Okay, so 16 years is when we have our first benchmarks for RF 100, and this is a 25-year agreement. How do we know that this isn't just, and I understand an MOU, but it's not enforceable? That's, an MOU by its own design is not. So I'm wondering, if we have 16 years to meet our first benchmark, how do I know that this agreement isn't going to destine us to fail? If there's not anything in this that says we're going to be supplying your customers with, you know, a graduated amount of renewable energy?
Yeah, so let me answer that one. So I think that's the latitude we wanted to ask for in the, in the agreement, is that we'd like to partner with City of Norman to understand what that is, and how quickly you want to get there. So a couple options. Tom mentioned, you know, some kind of free service trade-off for solar in the future. We're looking at a lot of different ways that we can help different communities and businesses have to attain their solar goals. Today, we only have one thing that's, that's allowed, one framework that's allowed for us, and it's Utility Solar Program, or USP program, and it's a filed tariff, you can see that on our website as well. But essentially, it's a fixed rate for customers. We do that, we build utility solar program projects, kind of based on customer demand. So we build a project, it gets sold out, and we build another project, and it gets sold out through subscriptions. And so that's the opportunity we have to offer now. If we wanted to do something more, and I think kind of part of the, why I would want a 25-year agreement, is because the, the assets we would put in place have, you know, essentially a 25- or 30-year life. So to make that investment over that period of time, needs to be a pretty substantial commitment on both sides.
So are you saying that you are willing to make an investment to outfit our buildings with solar, city buildings? Is that what you're saying?
Well, so I don't know that I want to be specific on exactly the type of investment. I think that we believe that, at least in the utility solar program, we believe that kind of a utility size solar is more cost-effective and more beneficial for everyone. So rooftop isn't, isn't a place that we think is a, is a great place to be. We'd certainly love to partner with the city in analyzing any of the desires or goals, whether it be provided by us or not.
Councilmember Scott?
So just a moment ago, you mentioned something about what you're allowed. I kind of forgot what it was I was going to ask as you were talking, but it was like to her question, that you are only allowed to give the certain rebate, or something like this?
So I think the question was about net metering, and then NIVO option that we have. So are, the way that we are able to apply generation to customers' bills is through an agreed-upon tariff. So when I was saying allowed, that was meaning, you know, Corporation Commission-approved tariff.
Okay, Corporation Commission-approved tariff.
Yes.
And then why wouldn't rooftop solar, because we have a municipal remodel going on right now, and, and again, with our commitment to RF 100, I'm wondering why we shouldn't be, I know lead is expensive, lead certification is expensive, but in the long run, it's better and less expensive, so I'm wondering why not rooftop solar?
I'm not saying not rooftop solar, but if you're looking for kind of the best bang for the buck from a cost standpoint, it's usually not rooftop solar.
What would it be?
It'd be like a utility size. I mean, so we think about things, especially in the utility solar program, in five-megawatt chunks. So that's, that's about a 40-acre project, if you're looking for kind of spatial size of what that looks like. And those have tracking panels on it, so they have a lot higher capacity factor. The cost per, per kilowatt is, I mean, it's substantially cheaper than a rooftop solar panel. So rooftops got some applications that are great, and we certainly wouldn't deter anybody from doing that, but the best value for us is, is on a utility scale size.
What about wind?
Yeah, right.
A solar farm is what you're.
A solar farm, a small, small solar farm.
We provide the land. Right, land.
Right.
40 acres.
Right, yeah.
So may I continue?
About the wind cost?
Well, we're going to bounce back and forth.
That's fine.
So if the city owns, we have some land lying around somewhere in the University North Park area, for example, and it's a large, just bit of land, and we wanted to put a solar farm there, and supply our own energy to our buildings, or to our customers. Do we have the ability to do that? Are you saying that would be more cost-effective for us?
Yes. I think anytime you can, you can build something at scale like that, that has the ability to track, I think it's going to be more cost-effective.
Okay.
And so I, so I tell you that I think that something very similar to what you described is something I think we would be interested in trying to partner and understand what that might look like from a city standpoint.
Okay, yeah, because like OEC has a small solar farm right off of the highway that's been like run into multiple times, so I don't know if people are doing that purposefully, or what. But, yeah, I think, I mean, the city owns land, I don't know what all OG&E owns, but like, we do want to be making this transition to solar and wind renewables.
We, we're looking at options, so whether it be with the city or other large customers, we're looking at how might we be able to, to package up this so that it's beneficial for both sides, and get it approved through our regulatory, our regulators. So we think that's a great option.
Councilmember Wilson?
So in our right-of-way, we are granting, with this, we would be granting you permission to be in our right-of-way, and this is ultimately what we're trying to get to right here, right? Currently, you have infrastructure built in the right-of-way, and you re-lease that infrastructure to other companies to be on, right? Like, if OEC needs to be go-by, you might lease them your pole, or if we have cell.
Yeah, we have, we have a pole attachment agreement with OEC on their, the new fiber.
And like Cox, and AT&amp;T, and those kinds of things, right? So do you guys, either of you have any numbers on how many the poles those might be, and what kind of revenue you generate off of that?
I sure don't.
And my interest is to.
They don't pay for sale, I can tell you that.
Right. Well, for me, I want to make sure that I am releasing all obstacles that might be in the way of getting internet infrastructure in my ward, so ultimately, that's the direction I'm going. So I would like to see those options be less harsh for internet companies. Or the city share in some of that revenue. Just throwing it out there.
Councilwoman Holman?
So a couple of things. Do you know is OG&E planning to build any new coal plants in the state of Oklahoma?
Or buy any.
Tom, or?
Or buy any.
What's that?
Or buy any existing.
Buying existing ones. We're not building any, but are we, is OG&E planning to add new coal plants that don't exist today?
We have no plans to do so. And if you read, read our RFP, or IRP, I'm sorry, Integrated Resource Plan, it talks about the, the next, the next best resources that we see is renewable resource.
And in regard to the solar farm stuff, is it in this agreement? I mean, if I'm understanding this correctly, OG&E would be interested in partnering with us, if we were, if we could come up with some land, maybe, and construct. I know, I don't think we could build a large enough solar farm to supply the entire city of Norman, maybe, I'm not sure. But if we were, you know, over this course of the years of this agreement, we decide, hey, we've got 40 acres, or we've got 300 acres throughout the city of Norman, and we want to do four different fields, is that something OG&E is saying you would be willing to invest in the infrastructure of that?
That's what we're saying, that's why, that's why we're trying, what this committee is, when we, when we have these kind of opportunities, as you're suggesting, this committee will get together, and that way, we can vet what the costs are, what the impact of the city is, and work together to get to these goals. Today, is, there's not really a, there's not really a process to do that. And that's kind of why, that's why I've been so adamant about this MOU, having this committee to where we can get that, we can get those things done. This is exactly it's in Norman, I live here in Norman, we want the same things.
That's my concern about the committee, too, is just like, what authority does it act, you know, does it really have to do anything, or you're just going to meet and talk, and, you know, but.
Are they advisory or oversight, basically?
Yeah, basically, yeah. And so those.
That's a good question.
Like, who are they reporting to, just the city council?
My mind is, it depends on who the city puts on there. That's how much authority and stroke you have, you know what I mean?
Right.
You can even put, you can even put staff, you can put the community leaders, you know.
And how much, I guess, how much recognition would that committee have at OG&E as a, this is what this committee thinks, and we probably should try to do that? Or, eh, it's just a committee, and we have the agreement, so we don't need to, we heard them, you know, that, I think that's the concern I'm hearing is.
And that's why Zach's here. He's, he's the renewable energy guy, and his, his department, his group, they vet all renewable opportunities.
Because I do think it's, as our city attorney mentioned, us. Because I do think it's, as our city attorney mentioned, us constructing our own power plant, you know, like Edmond has, is not impossible, but very difficult and even more difficult because of our rate structure and voting on rates in Norman and stuff. But it seems like doing, you know, solar farms, maybe a few of them or something, that doesn't take the type of process that Catherine's talking about. If I'm understanding correctly, that's...
We think a really great approach for the city and for us would be we, we build, own, and maintain this so there's not a significant cost to the city, and then have some kind of agreement with the city that this is, you know, we're doing this because of a franchise agreement. We're doing this because this is helping get Norman closer to its goal. So Norman has about, all the municipal buildings in Norman are about 10 megawatts worth of solar farm needed or renewable, renewable needed. So it would be a little bit different if it's wind versus solar, but if you, if you looked at just solar, it's about 10 megawatts would, a 10-megawatt site would cover.
What is a 10-megawatt site look like?
I mean, two 40-acre sites or 80 or, you know, something like that, yeah.
80 acres of solar to power the city of Norman's government?
Yes. And it could be broken up. It doesn't have to be...
Right next to it.
It could be anywhere, right? It could be...
Thank you. That's all I have for the moment.
Councilmember Scott and then Councilmember Petron.
Okay. Per the, I guess, MOU is where we establish this committee, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
I guess, is it up to the city or who is it up to? When would the committee be instated? Question mark? And then, so I would like to know that. And then also, and I'm just really, really looking for just written commitments when we revisit this, the commitment to, you know, what level, because right here in section eight on the ordinance, it just says, you know, in consideration for the franchise granted herein, the city and company agree to explore power options as an alternative. So I'm not like convinced with the exploration. I'd like to see that commitment. Whether it's step, step by step, like by 2022 to be 55% powered by renewable energies, and this much by solar, that whatever, by wind. And, you know, a reduction, like stepping away from coal, like literally, I just want to be able to look at this agreement real straightforward, because I'm real straight and simple, like I don't like to read between the lines. I just need to see where it's going to say, moving away from coal, shutting down this plant by this time. And I think that should happen within the next 10 years rather than, you know, after the next 10 years, just based off of what we know. And so those, I don't want to say verbal, written commitments to get away from that 30% coal number. Again, whether it's stepping down from, you know, 30% to 22% by 2022 and 15% by 2024, right? And then raising it up to renewable energy, because we are supposed to be 100% renewable by 2035. Okay? So I'd like to see that whenever we revisit this, to vote on it in favor of this agreement.
Come, go ahead.
One thing I'll throw out, and Zach, you might correct me if I'm wrong, since you're senior executive compared to me. One of the things that will be difficult is the city of Norman putting a document, putting something in place that mandates the whole OG&E company. And I say that because, you know, we can work with your goal to make Norman's get your goals. But what I'm concerned with some of the, some of the questions or some of the comments is you're trying to make sure that OG&E, how it affects other communities.
It would be my wish that...
And I understand your goals, but my point is just saying, you're making OG&E do this, making OG&E do this by certain day. Well, these coal plants and these other power plants, they, they, and I get with, I agree with you guys in your renewable goals. I'm not saying that. But my, my concern is putting it in a Norman document that says, we're going to, we're going to expect OG&E to do this when I already told you our goals are. But Zach, go ahead and...
I don't know that I have anything else to add, yeah.
I understand your concerns from, you know, the OG&E perspective. I feel like, I feel like I'm coming at this from kind of a larger, more, less localized perspective. It is my wish that any utility company would be moving away from coal, like noticing the trends, like global trends, and noticing the way that the nation is trending. We're still one of the only nations that particularly subsidizes oil and gas and coal and things like that, and like really aren't providing that much for solar, wind, and renewables. And so I understand, I don't know if it maybe needs to explicitly just say for the city of Norman, we want to see this, this, and this in our city. But if we can't create our own municipal utility and we are reliant upon you guys, this is an agreement that I think that we need to have based on our goals. And I understand that Oklahoma City and the surrounding cities that OG&E kind of supplies energy to may have already signed their agreements. But if they also have the opportunity to opt out, I don't know if like a regional utility is an option. If we were to all kind of invest together in something, you see what I'm saying? And so if we can make this happen on our own, or if we can make it happen by working with you all, I just would like to see a written agreement. Again, it can say the city of Norman specifically, so that, you know, the city of Norman's not dictating what OG&E is doing as a company. But in the city of Norman, we should be able to say what, how we are supplying our electricity to our people.
We can certainly work on some language.
All right, so I've got Councilmember Petron, Holman, Wilson, Scanlon, Bierman. Write your questions down.
Just go around and start one here.
So on Councilmember Scott's, I'll just follow up with that first, but I think basically what she's saying is that when you would go, or maybe correct me if I'm wrong, when you would go to the, to be investing in more coal or whatever in the future, that you would know, don't overbuy because Norman doesn't want it. So we don't want to, you know, have any say-so over other cities. We just...
Don't want coal in our city?
Yeah, we just don't want it. So to go for the investment side of it. And I guess that brings me to my second question was that, so say that you do have a document like this. You're explaining that you go to the Corporation Commission like every three years and you kind of forecast, this is what we need to buy. This is the growth that we're seeing, and, you know, that we're going to run out of energy in whatever time period. And you were talking about how, when I met with you, you had said something about that you needed to show them the bids from your RFPs and kind of defend what your purchase is. Well, if you have a franchise agreement with a third largest city that says, we don't want coal and we don't want oil and gas, and you go to the Corporation Commission and say, look, I see that, I understand that coal was the cheapest bid, but literally here is a, you know, 60,000 accounts, 44,000 residential, and however many else is the rest. They made us sign a document, we can't buy coal. They want renewables. Doesn't that give you some cover at the Corporation Commission to be able to defend the renewable purchase of infrastructure?
I think it potentially could give a little bit of cover, but I think, to be perfectly honest, I think at the end of the day, the commission's going to ask two questions. Did you go out for a bid? And second, did your decision, which you did, is it the cheapest for the ratepayers of the state of Oklahoma? And that's, that's, that's the beauty that a lot of people fail to realize. That's the beauty of being in a regulated utility here in Oklahoma. We have 850,000 customers spread cost out over instead of 44,000, 49,000 in Norman. That's why we have the cheapest rates in the United States for this community. So my point, my point when I say that is if renewable energy is cheaper, which Zach just got finished saying, he thinks forecasting for, going forward, that renewable energy is going to be a cheaper, cheapest option. So if we go, if we go and say, hey, we're going to buy more coal, they're going to laugh at us. But like I say, they're going to say, and we don't want it, and we're not committed, we're not going to do coal. We, I told you what our goal was. We're going to reduce our fossil fuel generation by 95% by 2030, between 2030 and 2050. That gives us time to the investments we already have in these facilities that everybody's concerned about, for those to be paid off. Because right now, if we say, let's scrap these things, there's a lot of stranded cost out there that ratepayers are going to be on the hook for. And so that's one, that's another concern that OG&E has to juggle, is we have to show, when we go to our RFPs, we say, we have to tell them when we're going to, we have to forecast when we're going to retire these plants. And that's why, that's why I wanted to offer up to you guys when, every three years when we do this, saying, hey, this coal plant, it has, here's our expected life of this plant, and then it's going to be retired. This plant's going to be retired at this date. And so every three years, we have to do that. And that's why I want, that's why I was trying to be proactive and say, I wanted you guys to have those, that information so you make great decisions, because Zach and I live here as well in Norman, that we want the Norman to do what's best for the city.
Okay. So a couple more things. The committee that you talked about, we actually have an E-CAB committee already. We are, we have a committee that's already set up. I would, personally, my preference would be that E-CAB would be an oversight committee of that. I mean, that's, they're working very hard already in...
They could be the designated even.
Yeah, the designated even. I wouldn't want to see us set up something completely different that, when that, that's what they're...
I agree 100% with that. My only concern with that, that I think I've expressed to you, is the E-CAB is a great organization. I'd go to all their meetings, great group, but one thing is missing. There's no utility person there on the committee. There's no OEC members, there's no OG&E members, there's no Oklahoma Natural Gas members, there's no other entities that have a vested interest as well. And to me, that's, to me, that's a flaw in, in the process of that board. And I, and I've expressed that, and I think that's something, if, you know, if OG&E members and other organization members are on this, this committee, I said, I'll go with 100%. That's, that's not a concern of mine.
Okay. Let me ask really quickly. So let me switch gears for just a second. On the LED lights, can you tell us what percentage have been replaced, the incandescent to the LED?
Cannot at this time.
Do you know if there's any plans to change? I mean, like right now, you're in a, when one fails, then we put in an LED. And then we just wait for another one to fail, and then we put in another. Is there going to be an expedited process to where we get all of these switched?
One of the things, if it's on a circuit, let's say there's 10 or 12 lights on a strand, and one light fails, then they'll replace all of them at that time. They won't, you know, just do that one and then come back.
What's the timeline that we think we're going to have all of these on LED?
300,000, company-wide, it'll be five years.
Five years.
So that's approximately, what, 60,000 lights a year?
Okay. And I want to be on record that I agree with the benchmarks that Councilmember Scott spoke about, that she wants to be able to see in writing that you're going to be, you know, XYZ amount of renewables that you're bringing online for Norman. I don't care about every other community. I'm here to serve Norman. And so I...
That's great, like Zach.
I think in this, in this franchise agreement, not in the MOU, I want, there's got to be, I mean, 25 years already is, that's just crazy for our side of the table going. I mean, that's just, that's really a lot. But to not have anything in it that shows that our main goal of RF 100 doesn't look like it's ever going to be achieved if we were to agree with these terms. So for me, I agree with Councilmember Scott on the benchmarks.
Councilwoman Holman?
Tom, when we talked before, a while back, talked about what power plants actually supply Norman with power. And you, I think you mentioned it wasn't just one. I know there's one that's very close to us on the other side of the river, and that one, if I recall, is a natural gas plant, or is it mixed or...
It's natural gas.
Okay, the one, okay. But Norman isn't just powered by that one plant. Is that right? How many do we know? Is it, is it just the entire, all the plants in the whole state are all connected and the whole state's powered by the, I can't, like, there's not three of them that power Norman?
Right. All the plants actually in the whole region are connected. I mean, so at different voltages across from, you know, Oklahoma to North Dakota, everything is interconnected together. So it isn't possible to say which plant is serving one specific place unless that's the only connection to that facility.
So you're saying you can't identify really how much of Norman's electricity is coming from natural gas, coal, wind? It's just coming from all of it, and we don't know exactly? Because I think sort of what several of us are alluding to here is, we want an agreement that says Norman doesn't want to be powered by those sources, specifically coal, and eventually no natural gas either. But if we were able to identify these plants are natural gas plants, and we're only going to supply Norman with those plants until this transition to where Norman could be mostly and completely powered by renewables. But we don't want any coal plants contributing to Norman's power. But you're saying that's not really how you could...
Right. Physically, you can't do that, but from an accounting standpoint, you can do that. You can track it that way.
Well, I mean, that's, I would say we'd want to look at any way that we can to say, we don't want any power that's coming to Norman to be from coal. We want it to be all from renewable energy, but I understand we've got to have some sort of fuel to get us through a transition period here. But coal, I think we're all very adamantly opposed to using that. I'll say, oh, I'm going to speak for everybody here, but several of us that have spoken are very opposed to using coal. If there is a way to really guarantee and show that power that's coming to Norman's not coming from coal, and we're working towards maybe constructing some of these solar farms so we can power city buildings, and we're getting towards these benchmarks to become completely renewable by, you know, our timetable here. So that's kind of where I'm trying to get to, is I understand that it's company-wide, statewide, you can't say because of Norman, we're going to do this. But for us, I'd really like to find some way that we can identifiably show people, we're not getting power in Norman from that source.
Councilman Holman, I just want to add what Zach just said, you know, with the integrated regional grid and all the, all the generation sources. Several states fit into this, this deal, and there are certain times where OG&E buys power cheaper than it produces. Nuclear facility in Arkansas, nuclear facility in Nebraska. So that's, let's say, that's been a benefit to OG&E customers and millions of dollars over the years. So I agree. I understand what you're saying. I understand what Councilman Petron, Councilman Scott, Sarita, Kate, all of everybody's side about the, about the, about the goal of the city. Zach and I, we're here, we want, we want to help Norman get to its goal. But what I've always said is we want Norman to get to its goal where it's not a great shock to Norman customers. And that's one of the things that we're, that we want to strive for. We want to be a partner with the city. Zach, he, he's very knowledgeable. He's a Norman resident. He's very knowledgeable on solar. And he knows, he knows, he sees prices of what the different generation sources are, and the IRP shows that as well.
Do you say coal is cheaper than natural gas? Or which one's the better deal? If Norman's just getting natural gas, I mean, say we're able to just be powered by natural gas right now and no coal. Is that more expensive to Norman ratepayers than if we were just powered by coal? I guess is the resource more expensive itself?
The fuel aspect is probably the part we can talk about. And so about, it seems around $2 natural gas price, that's when the threshold crosses between coal and gas. And that may be a bit dated, so not exactly that number, but that's, you know, different times of the year depending on natural gas prices. Coal prices are relatively consistent across, across the year. Natural gas prices have some fluctuation. So around $2 is when you see the, the transition occur between gas and coal.
So overall, would you say coal is the cheapest energy source right now? Is that why it's still going? Is because it's cheaper? What is the...
It's a very stable energy source that is reasonably priced. I don't know, I don't know that I want to say it's the cheapest.
I'm really just wondering, because I'm saying, if the city of Norman, we're not using coal, does that mean that we're paying more? Because you keep mentioning ratepayers and how much they're paying.
Yeah.
If we say we don't want to use coal, and, and I think as Norman residents, we may be willing to pay more to not have to use that source. But I'm just saying, is it cheaper for us to not use coal?
So here, here's...
From your standpoint.
So I don't think I can answer your question the way that you're asking it. So maybe a different way to think about this would be, instead of saying what power is coming... different way to think about this would be, instead of saying what power is coming to Norman, we could say what power is Norman using. So I know that sounds a little bit nuanced, but if you build solar, you build wind incrementally, that's feeding into the same system, right? You're displacing something else. And that's probably the right way to think about it rather than, because we can't really bifurcate solar from, or I'm sorry, coal or gas or whatever from coming into Norman. But if, if Norman is building incremental new generation, then it's, it's going to push something else out. So, I mean, I, I know it's a little bit nuanced the way I'm talking about it, but I think that's probably an easier way to think through.
Well, it's just when you mentioned that from a billing standpoint, you could track.
Well.
That I was wondering, well, from that standpoint.
All the fuel, all the energy prices go in and get kind of averaged and spread. So it's not, we know nodal pricing at generation points across the system, but that's not how customers are billed.
Councilmember Wilson.
Gosh, there's so much to digest here. So I'm just going to go back to my, my first foot stamping moment of 25-year agreement requires 25 years' worth of considerations by this board. So we have to be prepared for whatever might come at us in the next 25 years. And one of those things that we, is a very real possibility, is that electricity could become obsolete in some way. There could be a situation, 25 years, that's the end of my natural life possibly. You know, 25 years is a long time for us to anticipate every technological advance that happens, especially at the pace at which things are happening now. So when you want to get irritated at us for holding OG&E accountable, let's just push that back and say, we, you guys have preempted us at the state level, you've lobbied vigorously for what you're getting. You are, the, your initial infrastructure costs were not all born of OG&E. Those were federal allotments that created infrastructure that whenever OG&E became a situation. So we want to be ready for the next 25 years. Sometimes coal, you know, when you think about coal, we've got, you've also got people collateral and environmental collateral that we have to think about. So cheap is not always the best and not always the cheapest in the long run. So if you're going to insist on and put us in a situation where we have to have a 25-year agreement, you guys need to come in with a robust 25-year agreement that helps us be able to sign off on that.
Okay. Councilmember Scanlon.
All this talk about energy sources. I pay them extra every month to tell, have them tell me that I get it from wind.
Why do you pay extra?
But I know that it's fungible. I know that it comes from somewhere and it's a bookkeeping exercise. I understand the 25 years. And it's driven by financing, loan, structure and that kind of thing. And I think I understand that the only say we may have in all of this is this committee that you proposed. Therein lies my problem. I see a shopping list of things, but I also see that four on fours is eight people looking across the table at each other. I don't see that there's any leverage with that committee, I guess is what I'm saying. I think that one of the possible solutions for our dilemma is that it's a five-four proposition and we're the five. I don't know how acceptable that is to OG&E. I think this committee is advisory. I don't know how it could be anything else. But I'm looking for leverage. And having that kind of structure, I think, provides some leverage, some ability for the city to, to, to have a, a significant say in, in where we go during the course of this 25 years.
Thank you. Councilmember Beerman.
Some of this was already touched on a little bit, but it kind of goes back to Councilmember Wilson's point, is that a, in my opinion, a five-year recurring opt-out clause gives us the ability to put the consumer pressure, which in some ways we are, on a company as well as the ability to go our own way if technology does change in the next 25 years and make us less legally bound or less technologically bound. And from our perspective, that is something that we can do. That, yeah, we have as, as, as technology changes, we might need a right of way for something else. We might need it for the next wave of energy generation that we don't know is coming. The last 100 years, those 25-year increments moved a heck of a lot slower technologically than they are now. And so for me, that, that really is something that I think, I think we need to find a way to create an actual compromise and not the shadow of a compromise. I think we're almost there, but we're not there because you're still getting everything you want with that 25-year agreement. And every single lawyer I've ever met has told me that that is not a good compromise. So I don't think that we're there on that yet. And I do have a question for our city attorney, which is, in what way is this MOU legally binding?
It's not.
What I thought.
An MOU is an agreement to work on something, but it doesn't hold us to any particular result.
And so to me, and that's what I thought the answer was going to be. So to me, some of this needs to be in here. And I know that that's not the way you do things, but I don't like not having recourse. And so for me, this is, this is a good overture, but at least some of that needs to come in here. Because otherwise, what do we have except to tell you nicely, we were supposed to do some things in here. But there's nothing that any future council can do to hold you to that when you're not there and you're not there. And the next people sitting in those chairs say, well, you know, we meant well 18 years ago, but times have changed, we've changed, you've changed. We don't, there's nothing that actually gets us to our goal. And like Councilmember Holman said, there's really no way for even any partnered solar facilities to directly power Norman. We're not building a big solar plug and plugging the city into it. What we're doing is, and I, just to make sure that everyone, if we could do that, that'd be great. Next. But, so I just want to be clear that what that would do is, in some ways, be kind of a down payment on the offset. As you said, we would hopefully be squeezing other energy sources out, hopefully at a faster rate than you're adding connections and requiring more of that energy. And I don't know that there's any guarantee of that either. On some tiny things, because we're running out of time, and speaking of energy sources, I'm starving. 10 days is too long for an LED outage. To me, that's twice as long as it should be. I think to consider a plan that would provide designated representatives access to real-time data for operating, I think it should be developing mutually agreeable plan. I'm sure that there is some kind of plan we can come up with. So at minimum, that needs to be more definitive than that. But I do still feel that some of this needs to be in here. I think that this is a good start to the second round of these conversations, but I don't know that we're anywhere near to wrapping this up, in my opinion.
Any other comments? Councilmember Scott?
That's for me. I've been waiting. But I will keep it short because we have another meeting after this. And I know Kate is hungry.
Getting hungry.
Yeah. I think I've kind of said what I would like to see out of the ordinance language. And I understand it's not going to probably like be exactly what we're wanting, but the benchmarks, I think, would mean a lot to us and make it a little easier for us to stomach moving forward. I think that we just certainly need to move away from coal. There's only so much room on the grid and more renewables would be good for OG&E as well as the city and as well as the surrounding areas. I think that, that's a commitment that would behoove y'all from a business and cost perspective. And I had a question for our city attorney that I'm forgetting at this time. I'm so sorry. Catherine?
While you're thinking of that, I'll throw out my two comments that Mr. Pyle has shared with us. We can't buy it. Maybe we could rent it.
Yeah, we could.
Thought about that. Other communities have done that. And then I think we, we're hearing a lot about coal, perhaps a portfolio allocation, seeing how much energy is coming to us, how much is going to renewable. And we need that to at least match. We need to know that whatever you're doing renewable, it's matching our inputs so we can feel like we're through your whole portfolio, seeing our vision and what should honestly be everyone's vision if we all want to be on this planet 100 years from now. So with that, if there's no other comments, let's go ahead and adjourn. Go put some food in your faces and I'll see you at 6:30.